Well, you know, the United Workers Party has tried a number of things, they say, to try to get me out of office. And everything that they have tried has failed. So the thing they're gonna try now is that the European has bought 21 eggs. They bought 21 eggs, and they give it to 21 people in the 21 constituencies to hold on their arm. Because they said they want to make a moose to take Scarlett out of office. And if you think, if you think I'm telling a lie, when you see Wayne Abraham, ask him. But let me, let me recognize, let me recognize my friends and colleagues, our parl rep for Portsmouth, Honorable Ian Douglas, Honorable Robbie Towne, Honorable Ostry, and his worship, the Mayor of the Town of Portsmouth. We also have the first Honorable Rosalind Paul, a Member of Parliament for Peabody, and our caretaker in the Salisbury constituency, Mr. Nicole Shanks-Esprie. And to all of you, the wonderful people of Portsmouth, I know as the leader of the political party, the DLP, I can always rely on the support and the solidarity of the people of Portsmouth. And I will be, I will always be forever grateful, forever grateful for the continued support which you have provided to the Labour Party and myself as the leader of the party. Today, we have two town hall meetings taking place, here in Portsmouth and the other at Canefield. Because as the leader of the party, I have mandated our caretakers and parl reps, the need for them to stay in touch with their people. The need for them to go out to the communities and host town hall meetings and to report to you, the people of their various constituencies. And also, very importantly, to hear from you as to what is it is going on, how are things, what are the suggestions which you have for us, things that we can do together to make life better for you, your families, and to improve these constituencies and of course, our country by extension. So I'm very happy to be here in Portsmouth this evening and to seek to address some of your issues which have been articulated in the Cabinet by your Member of Parliament. And the first I will address is the issue of housing. Because housing has been a major challenge for Dominica for a very long time. And this is why we launched the Housing Revolution some years ago, seeking to create better housing conditions for many families across Dominica. Your opposition has criticized us for giving homes to people. But that's fine. But the people who have received those homes are all deserving and very grateful to have a better house, a better home for themselves. I am saying to you, the people of Portsmouth, that the government is making the following commitments insofar as housing is concerned. I am proposing for the government to build some 30 apartment units in Georgetown in Portsmouth. Because let us, let us be, let us be frank with ourselves. If we allow the people whom, who have identified lots in Georgetown to build homes for themselves and by themselves, the majority of them would have a challenge in doing so. And if we know that they'll have a challenge, it is now incumbent on the government to put a better and more structured approach in place to ensure we build decent homes for these families of Portsmouth. So we will be back here soon to present to you some of the drawings which we already have for Georgetown, to get your input so you can be part of the process from day one and we'll be hoping to get your endorsement of those designs. The parl reps told me that there are 15 families who are in desperate need of homes and who own their own lands. And I am committing the 15 homes and these monies will be sent to the Town Council to assist us in building those homes. And if we are diligent, I think if we are diligent as a government and also as contractors, we can no doubt get these people into the homes before the end of 2017. So those monies will be transferred the soonest to the Town Council to assist us in implementing. The Member of Parliament has also told you of the 75-plus washrooms which the government has constructed in recent months in the constituency of Portsmouth. And there are additional 49 washrooms needed in Portsmouth to allow for 100% access to washrooms in Portsmouth. That number, 49 washrooms, which will cost in excess of $530,000. That monies will be transferred also to the Town Council of Portsmouth to build the washrooms for the 49 families who are not yet, who do not have washrooms. And of course, in between, we will assist with improving the existing homes of homeowners. Many of you have certain challenges in respect to licking roofs and rotten boards which you need to replace. The Member of Parliament has indicated that the government has taken a decision, a national program of enhancing our community roads, reconstructing every village road and every town road in Dominica. And the Town of Portsmouth is part of that. And we've in fact started that program with funds already approved and contracts signed, in some cases, the monies are of the Town Council to construct a number of roads in Portsmouth. And I can say to you before the end of 2017, again, based on the diligence and efficiencies of the contractors, we will have all of those roads in Portsmouth. And when I say Portsmouth, I mean Zikak included, I mean Ghanivla included, to the whole of Portsmouth and including Dodan, Part Unborn, part of the Portsmouth constituency. Those roads will be reconstructed, funds have been identified and funds will be made available to effect the improvement of those roads. And with this, I am hoping that when I am back in Portsmouth on the 7th of May, we will address this one way and in Portsmouth. So when we come back here on the 7th, coming down from the Borough Square, there'll be one way down this street. So we will be implementing that by the 7th of May when we come here in the Town of Portsmouth. We'll also be reconstructing the length of road from the Borough Square down to the Agricultural Station. That entire piece of road will be reconstructed with appropriate lighting and also reinstatement of that very important storm drain which was unfortunately covered. That storm drain will be reinstated to take the water from Bydham like there all the way down into the sea as was the case before and minimize the flooding. So that's part of it, ladies and gentlemen. I know the Member of Parliament hosted a very successful meeting for persons who have existing small businesses and those who would like to start their own businesses. And the attendance was overwhelming. Because what this government has done and continues to do is that by interacting with people, hearing of people's concerns, hearing of their plights, hearing of their suggestions, we're able to develop programs to respond to people's needs. That's how we came about with the free medical care for people 60 and over and people 18 and younger. That's how we come up with the school transfer program of giving every single child in Dominica $500 to assist with the purchase of uniforms to attend secondary school for the first time. That's how we come about with these programs, by listening to people. So by interacting with business owners, small business owners, they told us sometimes we have a little challenge in going to the banks and getting a little loan to keep our businesses afloat, to buy stock. And as a result of this, we created the Small Business Development Unit. And that unit has been working tremendously, fantastically, ladies and gentlemen, to assist a number of people across Dominica. In the case of Portsmouth, in the case of Portsmouth, the government is committing $1 million to assist with small business assistance in the Town of Portsmouth. And I want to, I was saying to the Mayor earlier and I've said so to the parl rep and to the Cabinet, that we need to start positioning ourselves in Portsmouth, the residents of Portsmouth. We need to start positioning ourselves to take advantage of the major developments that are taking place in Portsmouth. We should not wait for when the hotels are open for us to start looking for places to open. We need to start now. Develop your ideas, develop your concepts and let us engage ourselves. Come back here and sit down around the table and to see how the government can work with you to realizing your dream of having your own business in Portsmouth. Because we need more craft shops in Portsmouth to cater for the tourists who will be coming to Portsmouth. We need more restaurants of different cuisines to provide that service to the increasing numbers of people whom we expect to come in Portsmouth. Tour guides. We need to ensure that all of the tour guides are properly trained so that when you are taking people around to various sites, you can speak with authority and knowledge about the various sites across the country. And there are a number of other areas we need to position ourselves to take advantage of the opportunity in Portsmouth. I've been saying to Portsmouth for a very long time that we need to close this street every Friday night or every Saturday night, whatever night we use. Close this street here. From the market there, go all the way towards Mr. Amos' place and let us put chairs and benches in the middle of the road and people can sell their produce. People all over Dominica can come to do something like what happens in St. Lucia, for example, every night, that can create employment, bring attraction and bring people inside Portsmouth to have a better way of life for people. So I'm putting it out to you again tonight to take advantage of this. The government will provide the seed funding to allow these things to happen and to build upon those investments. Another thing that we have spoken about in Portsmouth is the construction of a government administrative building. Because we have so many government offices here in Portsmouth and if we were to run a poll to ask people where is the education building, many of us in Portsmouth would not know. And I think we need to have, this is a town in Dominica. And if it's a town in Dominica, then it must have appropriate government offices here in the Town of Portsmouth. And people must know they can go to a central spot and to acquire government services. This idea of having government services scattered all over does not make sense for a town, if we really call it a town and we mean that is a town. So what we have done in the government is to speak to the Social Security and say to them, will you finance the construction of this administrative building? You finance it, you will put your interest rate, whether it's 5 or 6%, on the cost of financing it and the government of Dominica will lease that building with eventual aim of owning it after we would have paid you for what you spent and your interest rate for building this building. So this office, this will have, this administrative building will have, among other things, an office for the Prime Minister. So there's no need for you to go to Rosie to see the Prime Minister. He will come there from time to time and have an office day here in Portsmouth in the government office. At this government office, there'll also be the Sub Treasury, the DSS Office, the Education Bill Office, all of the government offices will be located in this building. And also that of the parl rep will be there. The post office will be inside there too so that you can get all of the government services in this one huge administrative building. And we'll also provide for appropriate conference facilities so that meetings like this would be held at the government building rather than at the marketplace. That is not acceptable. We have to do better than that and we must move quickly to build the administrative building. So these things will be done, ladies and gentlemen. The money is available. We need to conclude on the plans and the drawings and to start the process. And what I'm making the long spend here in Portsmouth at this town hall meeting for the first time. Because I want to ensure that every promise which we make, while the parl rep will have a responsibility to ensure that we fulfill our obligations and commitments, I want somebody to be able to push this thing on a daily basis. And I have identified Titus Francis, who I will appoint as the coordinator of these projects to ensure that they get done and they get done on a timely basis. So Titus, Titus will be reporting to myself and to the Member of Parliament on a regular basis on what we're doing to ensure we can fulfill those commitments to the Town of Portsmouth. Because as Reggie said and Ian said, Portsmouth has a right to get what Portsmouth truly deserves. And the government and the government must not be afraid to spend the monies that it must spend in Portsmouth. There should be no excuse for us to not spend the money in Portsmouth. Because Portsmouth has been good to Dominica and Portsmouth has been good to all of us. And every single dollar that is spent in Portsmouth is money well spent and monies well deserved for the people of Portsmouth, ladies and gentlemen. Because for too long, for too long, you, the people of Portsmouth, have been denied by political parties because of who you support, because of who you supported. And when we came into office, because sometimes, you know, my dear friends, even those of us who support the party and support the party strongly, we forget where Portsmouth was in 2000. We forget where Portsmouth was in 2000. Every single road in the whole of Portsmouth was bad. Every single road, Zikak Road had mud in it. Mud. It was difficult to come from, to pass by the Rodney's. The Rodney's there. All of the streets in Portsmouth was bad and we had to systematically go about improving the road network in Portsmouth to the point that you even have road going up to the cemetery in Chants, ladies and gentlemen. But we still have a lot of work to do and that we will certainly do, my dear brothers and sisters. So whatever you get, you deserve it and do not be afraid to proclaim that to the rest of the world. So we'll fulfill our commitments to you, my dear brothers and sisters. And of course, the parl rep spoke about a number of other programs that are ongoing in the Town of Portsmouth and the wider Portsmouth constituency. Now, I told the country some weeks ago that there will be a presentation made to the Cabinet on April 21 on the International Airport. Well, that presentation took place on April 20F, one day before. And I can tell you that this country, our country Dominica, will see itself having an international airport. And what the experts have said to us that the airport is feasible, the airport can be constructed. And what I said to them is that I want this international airport constructed in Dominica. And we have mandated them to proceed with the plans. So they're now moving to do the EIA. They're moving to do more detailed studies of the area to give us more specific details on the construction costs. And we'll also be required to acquire some properties in the area identified. At some other time, I will have a more lengthy presentation to make and report to make to the country in respect to the International Airport. But we need the International Airport. And we've always said so as a Labour Party. What we have to watch is the method of financing the International Airport. Because taking a loan to build an international airport, the country will not be able to afford it. So there must be a mix of financing options. And that's what we will pursue and that's what we will do to ensure the International Airport is constructed. On May 1st, all of you are invited, it's an open invitation, to commission the new West Bridge. A bridge just 13 months ago, we started. And when you see the construction, that is what we want our city, our country, to look like. Employing the best technology available in construction and ensuring that we have it here in our country. Too, for too long, for too long, we have to go to somebody else's country and hope we have something like that in Dominica. And we have to push on, we have to press on, not to stand the fact that some in this country would not like to see our country move forward. So we, all of you are invited on May 1, May 1st, to Roseau, to witness the commissioning of the new bridge. You'd have also seen that we have done a complete transformation of the Easty Low Black Bridge. Complete reconstruction of the bridge to the satisfaction of many. Just last night, I believe, or the weekend, we surfaced the bridge. So those bus drivers, when you're driving, you'll be surprised on what you'll be driving tomorrow morning to enter into Roseau. The West Bridge, they no longer have to slow down on the bridge because of the panels across it. We have done a remarkable job. And you know, we have taken so much care and attention in respect to the details of this bridge that what the Cabinet did was that it sends government officials to meet with the family of the late Easty Low Black and to speak to them and to say to them, look, we are reconstructing this bridge named after your father. What were your father's favorite colors? What colors let us paint the bridge? So it could really reflect and represent Mr. Easty Low Black, a trade union pioneer and a labour warrior, not only in Dominica but throughout the region. So the colors which you will see, the bridge being painted over the next few days, were selected by the family of the late Easty Low Black. As a matter of fact, we had to change the railings from a light green to a dark green because the family wanted the railings painted in dark green. The family wants his name painted in black and white because he was a man, a stately man, always well dressed and so forth. They wanted that to reflect him. So every little detail you will see on this bridge came as a result of the recommendation of the children, the family of the late Easty Low Black. And that's the kind of respect, that's the kind of homage which we pay we repay to statesmen. Not the kind of political thing that the European did here when they did the Michael Douglas Boulevard and just paint it in blue and I'll go stuff on it and so forth. You know what I'm saying? Go to the family, talk to them. You know, for all you know, Mike's color was baby blue, not the dark blue that they painted the the Michael Douglas Boulevard, ladies and gentlemen. But we have been able to do all of these things. The Housing Revolution, the reconstruction of the roads across Dominica, the new West Bridge, the repairs to the Easty Low Black Bridge. Because the good Lord has been good to us in many respects. The world, my dear friends, as all of you know, because we all have relatives or friends overseas, the world is a very difficult place. Things are difficult in many parts of the world. And we have been able to generate significant sums of money from the Synergy by Investment Program. And it is because of that, in large measure, we have been able to respond to the needs of our people in this country. Because lest we forget, it is just less than two years ago we were visited by tropical storm Erica. With $1.3 billion of destruction caused in our country. Over 90% of our GDP was washed away. We had to relocate several hundreds of families, paying their rents every month, giving them an allowance every month to take care of their families. People who lost their properties, their household items, giving them 60% of the cost of these items so they could buy new ones and put them back in their homes. And we must not forget that, notwithstanding all of the destruction caused by tropical storm Erica, we are still making things happen in this country of ours, Dominica. And we are doing so because this Labour Party understands what needs to be done to create a better way of life for people. So while we are here working hard every single day, morning, noon and night, seeking to raise the funds, to secure the resources, to make life better for our people, to create a better Dominica for us, we have some on the other side whose only interests, only interest is to destroy our country and to deny you, the people of Dominica, a better way of life. And they're colluding. They're colluding with people who have no interest in whether your house licking or whether your children can go to school or whether you have a job. They're colluding with these people who have never been to Dominica, who have no interest in Dominica to seek to undermine our country and to black eye our country across the world. What kind of people are these? You can have a political difference. We've always had opposition parties in Dominica. But when Mike was opposition leader, Mike used to go to St. Martin and get markets for us. Mike would go and sell a shop and create jobs for people of Portsmouth. When Mike go and speak, he would speak about Dominica and how we can make our country better. When Rosie was leader of the opposition, Rosie went to get scholarships for her people. Rosie would go out and raise money to affect Maui in Portsmouth to create jobs for people in Portsmouth. Rosie would go to Guadaloupe and bring Dr. Mark Hook here and to go from home to home, home to home. That's what opposition was. That when you're in Parliament on your platform, you fire blows. But the moment you go out of Dominica, you must be a statesman representing the interests and well-being of your country. That's what it is. And I don't understand how some people can find it's okay for opposition people at any time they get opportunity to speak about Dominica is about something negative. And I'm warning Dominicans, you know, there are some people in this country who believe that the only person who will be affected by what these guys are doing is Roosevelt Scarlett. But I am saying to them that this is a huge mistake they are making. This is a huge mistake they're making. If truth be told, I may be the least person who will be impacted by this. And we have to stand as a people irrespective of who you support, stand in defense of our country, the Commonwealth of Dominica. Understand this. And just to talk, to tell the world that a Prime Minister, a government can give somebody 10,000 blank passports. And the leadership, the leadership of the opposition, the leadership of the Workers' Party, see nothing wrong with that. See nothing wrong with that. What if, ladies and gentlemen, what if a foreign government were to take this seriously? Every one of us who has a Dominican passport would be either denied from entering these countries or held back. Understand the impact of this on our people, on our way of life, on our future. This cannot be politics. That's not politics. You see in America, for example, ladies and gentlemen, in America, they will fight the president, but that has been done only in America. When they go out of America, they are Americans and they will defend their government, they will defend their country. And, and that is what has made America the greatest country in the world. People speak proudly of their country, notwithstanding the challenges they may have, notwithstanding the political differences which they may have, but when they go out of their country, they defend America. And that is what is missing in Dominica. That is what, that is what is missing in Dominica, that there is a group of people led by Mr. Linton, who are prepared to destroy the country with the hope of getting into political office in Dominica. So ladies and gentlemen, the world is going through a difficult, difficult challenge. And the recession, which started in 2008, is still with us in this world. Many of us, as I said, have relatives out to Dominica. And some of you mothers and families, you have to go to the credit union and to take a little money you save to send for your daughter somewhere else because she can't pay her rent. She need a little money to buy, to, to, to buy some groceries for the, for the, for the month. Is your daughter, you must go and take a look that you have and go Western Union, get somebody to fill the form for you to sell the money for your daughter overseas. That's the reality of the world, that we have seen a reduction in monies coming in from overseas because our people, some of them do not have jobs. And if you do not have a job, you're unable to send something for your granny and for your, and for your siblings. And that's what it is. The world is, is a challenging place and it requires us as a people to work together to ensure we can create a better way of life. Because as the world is getting more difficult, we have to paddle our canoe longer than we used to before, by ourselves. We have to do more now by ourselves than we ever required to do in the history of Dominica. And it requires all of us, irrespective of our, of our own views, to play our part. And that's what we're doing here in the Labour Party, in the government, playing our part to ensure we can create a better way of life. We have launched the pilot national health insurance program, targeting a very vulnerable group in our society, single mothers and children under three, eight, three years and under. What is in that to criticize, ladies and gentlemen? What is in that to criticize? Here it is, you have so many families. And as I keep saying, there, there, there are pregnant mothers in this country who have had to go on bedrest from three months of pregnancy. They may be, they may be hypotensive or suffering diabetes, complications come about. They have to go on complete bedrest, they can't go to work, they can't clean their homes. And every week they must go and see the specialists and doctors today, it's not only Dominica. Before they talk to you, you have to pay them. No matter how urgent this surgery is, unless you don't get the 8,000, you know, it's when you get the money, then they give you a debt. That's the reality of the world, the world, the world has changed. And we should not feel comfortable because you may have insurance and somebody else doesn't have, you have to be concerned about the people who do not have insurance. These guys are criticizing every single thing good that is happening in the country. They're criticizing the public support program, the so-called Red Clinic. But tell me, my dear brothers and sisters, tell me, what should I do? What should I do as Prime Minister of this country? When somebody comes to me, the child just born and the doctors have identified a hole in the child's heart and the child has to go to matnik and it's 30,000 euros and the doctor is saying to me and the child mother is saying to me that even child doesn't get to go to matnik, the child will die. What should I do? Should I tell him, go and pray to God and die as Job did, as Job's wife did to him? We have to help. We have to help. And all I said to these families, all I can do for you, my darling, is to give you the money and to pray for your child. But we have to always look at people's concerns. You saw this child who was born with cataracts in the eyes, three months old. I never asked his family whether you supported me or not. I never asked people whether you support me or not. And the first beneficiary of the pilot health insurance came, three months old child. And I always see children, the child could have been my, my child, my son. And it's not because the good Lord has given me something, I have insurance, I can send my child out, I must not allow other people to have the same. And this is why I will defend our social programs because we as a people, we have a moral and biblical responsibility to look after the less fortunate among us. You know, people sometimes really get me upset because some of the people who criticize these programs, if you go back five years, they may have gotten help. And now they're part of the middle class and they want to criticize now the people who need the help. I say to people, I say to people, never, ever grudge what a needy person has received. Because the Lord mandates us to look after the poor. To provide shelter for the homeless. Provide clothes for those who have no clothes on. Feed the hungry. That's what the Lord has taught us. So if we're saying that we are Christian nation, how could we therefore criticize the government building homes for the homeless? Understand this, the United Workers' Party has no interest whatsoever in people. To, ladies and gentlemen, brothers and sisters, to lead a people, you must first love them. You must love people to lead them. And see how these guys are behaving and they're not even in government. They're not even in government. Can you imagine, ladies and gentlemen, God forbid, that these guys will become a government of Dominica? So ladies and gentlemen, I want us, I want us, I want us to remain focused. The government, the government is doing its part. I want you to do your part too. I want parents, I want parents to look after the children. You know, enjoy our children go to school and that they do the homework and they take advantage of the opportunities that many of us did not have. Because it is through education, we can empower our children to become better at what they do and better, have a better future. We must not allow them to walk the streets when they should be at school or when they should be studying. We have to ensure that this is done. We have to assist the town council, as, as, as our comrade Ian has indicated, to beautify the place, beautify the town. Because Portsmouth now is the epicenter of major developments. You now going to have a five-star hotel in Portsmouth internationally branded. So you are going to be on the map, as you have always, already been on the map, but you're going to be even in an heightened manner. So we have to ensure that when our guests come to Dominica and they come to Portsmouth, they will have the best experience they will have anywhere in the world and want to come back and come back and come back, ladies and gentlemen. Because for so many years, over 45 years, this kind of developments have been elusive. They have not been able to come. We have tried over the years, many people who have indicated they could build hotels for us in Portsmouth, in the Cabot's area. And today, you know, I was saying to somebody, looking at the world, history and the developmental history of our country. Whether it's hospital, whether it's education, whether it's infrastructure, whether it's water, whether it's lights. The Labour Party always has had its hands in major development programs in our country. Look at it. Look at it. In every major milestone we've achieved, the Labour Party was the driver in these efforts. And it is happening with us here, ladies and gentlemen, that we can now see hotels being constructed in this town of Portsmouth and more hotels to come to create jobs for so many of us in this part of the country and the whole country as a whole, who need those jobs. So I'm very happy to be here in Portsmouth. I'll be back in Portsmouth on the 7th for a massive rally. To let, you know, I, po, po fair, po fair say boogler. To let these guys know that the Labour Party is and will be the party of choice for Dominicans, ladies and gentlemen. And we're coming here, we're coming here in Portsmouth in large numbers on 7th of May, ladies and gentlemen. So I will be there with you on the 7th of May. So I'm very happy to be here. My challenge to, to your Parrep, and I must say, you know, we have to speak honestly. Ian does have his ups and downs. But, but I, I must say, in the last couple of years, Ian has rarely been up there, ladies and gentlemen. Ian has rarely been up there. So let us ensure we keep him up there and do what he has to do to ensure that we deliver on the promises made to you, the people of Portsmouth. And that's why I'm bringing, um, Titus to ensure that we can deliver, to assist us in ensuring that we can deliver on the many promises which were made to you, the people of Portsmouth. So my friend here, your name is on the list of the 15 homes which Ian has granted, provided me the list, and by Christmas you will be inside your home, God willing. So if you want to find out whose name is on the list, you have to contact your Parrep, ladies and gentlemen. But I know my friend very well there and, and, and her name is down on the list. So thank you very much for listening to me. Thank you very much for listening to me. I'm happy to be here always in Portsmouth. A community that we owe a lot to, a community that we owe a lot to, and we'll always be forever grateful to you. Thank you and God bless you.